Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education for March 13th, 2019. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Levert.
Here.
Mr. Fulkerson.
Here.
Mrs. Sands.
Here.
Mr. Borkowski.
Here.
Dr. Lemke.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Novot.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I will make my first correction of the night. It is not March 13th. It is March 19th. Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. Over the last few weeks, there's been a fair amount of frustration among the middle school parent population and the transparency of the school district, or lack thereof, has been cited as an issue. Tonight, I'd like to spend a few minutes discussing personnel issues, student discipline, transparency, and the law, and how those topics work together sometimes and how they conflict with each other at other times. When I first campaigned to be elected to this board six years ago, I ran on a platform that had five core values, and transparency was one of them. Six years later, I remain as committed to transparency as I was then, and I know that each of my fellow board members and administrators feel the same way, as we often talk about the need to be transparent to the community in our decision-making and our oversight. But, and this is where things get frustrating for parents, there are times that we simply are not able to be fully transparent, often due to legal issues and sometimes due to safety issues. Virtually every month prior to a regular board meeting, we meet in what is called executive session, which is closed to the public. The Open Meetings Act defines specific situations when boards of education are permitted to meet in executive session, and many of them are not optional but are required by law. All matters concerning personnel and/or student disciplinary matters must be discussed in closed executive session. We are prohibited by federal privacy laws from sharing this information with the public. This is also where student behavior and related discipline comes in direct conflict with transparency. When an incident occurs at school and students come home talking about it at the dinner table, parents naturally want to know more details. Common questions include, "Is what my student's saying, is it true? Did a student really do what my child reported? Did the incident occur in my child's grade or homeroom? Is my child safe? What is the school doing to the students involved? Have they been expelled or at least suspended? How many days were they suspended? And why am I reading about it on Facebook instead of hearing about it from the school?" We hear all these questions and more, and we are generally not able to answer most of them. The last question regarding social media is important. Comments on social media are often speculation and rumors being stated as fact, and they are often somewhere between partially and entirely untrue. They also rarely include the entire picture of what occurred, to use an example of a student disciplinary matter, what led up to the incident, other students that may have played a role either as instigator or peacemaker, and additional important context. Typically, none of that is included. But school officials, including board members, administrators, and principals, teachers, and other staff, simply cannot jump into the conversation and set the record straight. Doing so would almost certainly violate privacy laws, since setting the record straight invariably involves some level of details. Simply saying, "That's not true", with no additional details, generally does not satisfy people. So the rumors persist and grow and are largely left unchecked. This board and our administration do understand that this is frustrating. We hear you loud and clear. While fully understanding the frustration, we still cannot share the details. That is the law. School building safety is another area where we do not fully disclose all details, and that is because it is the smart thing to do, more than being a legal issue. This board was extremely transparent in communicating the renovations of the entrances at each of our school buildings when that project was completed a few years ago. And while those vestibules are important safety elements, there are many other safety features and plans that we have implemented in our buildings, features and plans which we do not share publicly for the simple reason that we don't want the bad guys to know about these measures. The bad guys know all the safety features. It's a lot easier for them to circumvent the measures. This is a case where the safety of our students, your children and mine, becomes a higher priority than truly being 100% transparent on items which legally we could share. We acknowledge that, and hopefully you understand and respect the balancing act that we do. Finally, tying these issues of behavior management and discipline together with the transparency issue discussed earlier, expectations for student behavior with associated consequences are detailed in the Student Handbook and posted on the Deerpath Middle School website. The administration, in collaboration with this board and its oversight role, has recently undertaken a thorough review of that policy, as well as evaluating the implementation of it, to ensure alignment with the board's philosophy. And the board's philosophy is that all students have a right to an emotionally and physically safe learning environment, and students creating emotionally or physically unsafe learning environments should and will be separated from the environment and/or provided more support. In closing, I'd like to reiterate that this board, as well as the entire administration team, take transparency, student behavior, discipline, and confidentiality very seriously, and we will continue to do so. We recognize that sometimes these items are in conflict with each other, and we will continue to try to balance communicating with parents appropriately while also following the law. Please know that both safety and the education of your children remain our top priorities. Thank you. We now move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. And so I wanted to extend the conversation about our data dashboard to the next level. So in our last meeting, what I showed was the first iteration and then the second iteration on improving those on the district dashboard. And so what I'd like to show you now is the completed dashboard, and we can discuss this in whatever format that we like. We are ready, we will be ready to go live on this within the next week if the board should so choose. So with our academics, we have two key data points. And down below, where it says, "Read more," there'll be some longitudinal data for each of these. And we feel that these graphics are clear enough and understandable enough. One of the differentiating points, based on one of the comments that we received last time from Dr. Lemke, was our target is 90%, which is right here. And so this gradation here shows that we're nearing our target there. And to continue on academic growth, we had these together, reading and math. We can make them one, but it seemed to be, to us anyway, more informative to break reading and math growth out separately. Okay? So we could aggregate these, however the board would like to see that done. But again, our target is 100% for each of these. We have 84% on reading growth and 85%. And again, down below, there will be, whatever longitudinal data that we can have, will be down below on this. We also have social-emotional indicators. My conversation with Mr. Borkowski earlier today, we are going to be reexamining these, in particular, looking at whether or not our Gallup number, given where our seventh graders are, is fully in alignment with our targets here. But again, these are the graphics, and then down below, there will be live links down here. These are live links right now that I could click on. So then finally, for environment, this is a draft graphic for inclusion. It was our opinion that this was a pretty suitable graphic, but if that doesn't ring people's charms, we will look for another one. And this is the percentage of students that spend 80% or more of their day in Gen Ed, and we are currently at 79%. That number has risen substantially. So if we were to look at the historical picture here, it would show a pretty marked rise there. The AAA bond rating was the one that the board had centered on as being a single overarching indicator of financial well-being that the community understands. We also have a really strong track record with our AAA bond rating. We remain one of 74 districts in the nation that enjoy that privilege, one of a handful in the state of Illinois. And that is what the district dashboard could look like at the pleasure of the board.
Could you scroll down for a sec, Mike, to the bottom one?
Yeah.
So I have two comments, not so much on the graphic here, but the subtitle inclusion.
Right.
Could we call it inclusive practices, or could we call it access to general education? I just think that that word carries with it some things that maybe don't go into the way in which we're doing the practice. And as a noun that is going out of the vernacular right now, it's something that we talk about at NSSE.
Yeah, that's a great point, and one that, as soon as you said, it's like, oh, yeah. So yes, we absolutely can find a better title for that. Great point.
Mike, these are kind of picky, but if you look at the AAA one, and if you scroll up then and look at, scroll up a little, that one, both of those, and scroll up more to the more, to that algebra one.
Okay.
Those ones, so the AAA one's weird because it's measured on a scale of bond rating, but the other four are the only ones where our target is not literally 100% of whatever we're measuring.
Right.
So like the Gallup polls are, our target is four, but it's out of five. And there, our target is 90%, but it's out of 100%. So in this graphic, since you credited that to me, you notice how there's a differentiation between 100%, the target, and the actual.
Right.
But if you go down to the other ones, go down one more, there, the actual is five, or the actual potential is five, but our target is four. So I agree that those both make it look like we are really close to getting our target, but it's not sort of the same as that in showing that our target isn't quite exact, everything it could be. Now, I don't know if that's important or not. And I don't know, unlike the AAA one, what that metric's going to look like if we would ever lose AAA, so we better never lose it.
It'd be a sad face.
But I wonder if there wouldn't be, sort of like, truth in advertising, something we could do with those that, it is true, we're making our target, but they do go out of five or something. It's just something to think about.
Right. Yeah, and even doing this, we run the risk of this not being fully clear to people, frankly.
That's true.
We might be better off just saying, "Look, eliminate one of these shades and say we're almost to our target," instead of having the 100% here and the 90% there and the fact that we're approaching on it. So it, yeah. So, good point.
Other comments or questions for our superintendent? You and your team have made a lot of progress on this over the past few months, so thank you.
Good guidance. Thank you.
We now come to public participation. If any member of the public wishes to address the board.
Actually, Mike, can I ask one more quick question? You can sit down. You don't have to be up there. When you click on the "Read more," you kept saying, "Historical data." There will also be in the "Read more," a more accurate definition of how things are being measured, or not?
There will be longitudinal data under there, and then we also have a certain number of characters where we can describe things.
Because I think, especially with the Gallup stuff, those out-of-five measures, it should be mentioned somewhere, "We're measuring out of five," just, you know, so people don't think we're measuring out of seven and we're picking four.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, just because we've been working on it, Jordan's been assisting with, there is a paragraph that goes in there that describes the test, as well as the metrics and what each rating gives. So there's a paragraph and then the longitudinal data. So yes, definitely on those two, we have that built out, ready to go.
Thank you. We now come to public participation. If any member of the public wishes to address the board, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the board. Each person is limited to a maximum of three minutes to speak. Public comments directed to the board are listened to and taken under advisement. While the board may ask clarifying questions, the board does not respond or necessarily answer questions posed to them. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Harpold at 140 East Stone Avenue. I had a question, and I'm not sure this is the right body, but is the report that the Northwestern Center for Talent Development created last spring going to be made public?
Thank you for your comment. We won't answer it tonight, but I am very confident that someone will answer that. You know the answer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Jeff Fulkerson will be answering that tonight, but you have to stick around to find out. I also am interested.
Who's your partner?
Right. It's going to be in your report. Fantastic. You will get an answer to that tonight. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, we move on to reports. Midyear strategic plan update, Rebecca and Mike.
Okay. Well, I would be remiss to not mention how hard and well Rebecca has worked on everything else on her plate in addition to the strategic plan. And so beyond being pleased with the fact that we continue to make so much progress and that the progress is so well documented, there's a huge number of balls and plates that are in the air relative to this midyear strategic plan, and we are fortunate to have her on board to discuss this with us. So with that.
Thanks, Mike. So today, I just want to give a quick highlight to the strategic plan update for March. You have the report. We'll spend about five minutes highlighting a few things, and then if you have any questions, our team is available to answer those. One piece that we want to highlight is that over the past few years, we've implemented a social-emotional learning curriculum. And one of the things that we're working on this year is looking into social-emotional screening tools, which will be piloted in the spring and hopeful implementation this coming fall. We also just recently had a very successful professional development day called the Tri-District Day, where we partner with Lake Bluff 65 and the high school. We had our first standing ovation, so I hear, for our keynote speaker, Tom Murray. And then we did an ed camp, which is the first time that all three districts have tried something like that, where teachers on the spot talk about what they'd like to learn and then develop little and large cadres throughout the day to have those conversations. So it's professional development by teachers for teachers. So there were hiccups in that in relation to who takes the lead and what type of conversations do you have, but we really wanted teachers talking to one another and sharing their knowledge. In addition, in relation to communication, I think many people have seen Mr. Simick's weekly video, or excuse me, not weekly, but videos, and written, I didn't say that. It's not weekly. Sorry, Mike. His periodic written and videos to our community to increase community engagement. And also, all administrators have been trained on a communication tool called Thought Exchange, so that we can engage with all of our stakeholders, teachers, and community members to learn about their viewpoints and ask perspectives in a very unique way about things that we're doing. Also, we've developed a strong partnership with the Apple team, and we've been engaging our teachers, those who have implemented the one-to-one initiative, and provided a ton of professional development for those specific teachers in relation to how to use the tool and what's the best way to engage with our students. Renee Fitzsimmons is going to give a brief update on the K-8 digital portfolios. And I do want to remind you that the last time we did the strategic plan update, Kate gave an update on Kate Cavanagh, Director of Student Services, gave an update on Champs and Foundations. So we're trying to highlight a few key components each time we provide an update to the board. So I'll pass it over to Renee.
Good evening. And I'll be very brief, and I apologize to Mr. Fulkerson and Mrs. Sands and Mrs. Levert, because they've already heard this, and you'll probably give more details in your update. But if you remember, our digital portfolios that we're doing, this is essentially an innovator's way in a future-ready school to take what you used to receive from your children in a folder from parents or an art portfolio, and this is now a way to do this in a super innovative way, but also a metacognitive way. So one of my favorite quotes is from John Dewey, saying that "We don't really learn from doing, but instead we learn from reflecting on doing." So this is metacognition at its best. And this has ultimately become, for our D-67 learners, a digital learning tool, where they're able to, in different ways, take their work, not always their best, sometimes their most difficult that they learned the most from, and by actually doing something with it, thinking on it, reflecting on it, it then becomes a metacognitive tool for making learning sticky. We did survey our teachers, and we asked them if they found value in digital portfolios, and we had an overwhelming 90% of our teachers who said they did find value in this tool. And we had a cohort last year of K-8 teachers who did some work and exploring, and they informed our decisions for this year, which said that we would use the Seesaw tool, which is our K-4 platform, which is also a learning management system, but it allows teachers to have their students own a little portfolio, put in updates, reflect on it. And then our 5'8" teachers decided that they wanted Google Sites, which is a Google Suite app. What we are doing is we're giving professional development on how this can be done. We teach our teachers that you can make this a rigorous sub-plan. If you're not in the classroom, it can be done as a bell ringer when students enter the classroom, work time to differentiate when some students are finished early, and then also dedicating time to this. I also am proud to announce that while this was a two-year goal on the strategic plan, we now currently have 100% of our students who have built their own portfolio, either in Seesaw or in Google Sites. Now, I am going to try really hard to click on this, but I'm realizing this is not my computer, so I may have to log in. So I'm going to try really quickly to get into Seesaw, and we'll see what happens. I may have to sign in, but I'll be brief. Okay, I can, I think I can do this. Okay, because this is really very exciting to see. Oh, an email, okay. Okay. Success. Okay. How many minutes was that? Was that quick enough? All right. So if we go and we look at some of our classes, and then we take a peek at, for example, Mrs. Dombi's class, there was an exciting student that we took a peek at, and you can just see how, for example, Gabriella down here has her own portfolio. You can pick whichever folder you want. She happens to have three in math. And they were going around the room doing a search on some geometric shapes. And do we have a voice? I don't know if we've got sound, but.
This is a cylinder. It has zero edges, two faces, and zero vertex.
So I'm not sure if you could hear what she was saying, but she went in the room, and based on their assignment, she was able to find this shape, talk about how it was a cylinder and all of its properties. She's a first grader. So that's one of our examples that we're extremely proud of. And then our Google Sites examples, we've got, I can show you in eighth grade, because I think we looked at the fifth grade the other day. But ultimately, we've set them up, or the students, I should say, set them up themselves, where you can look at what they've done in reading, reflections on their writing, what they did linked to their assignment, and then any pictures or videos that they've uploaded to talk about. In fifth grade, they have more videos. But they're, in a two-year project, we're really excited to just see all of this, all of this work, and all of this excitement, and all of this professional learning around this initiative. So do you have any questions for me?
So is there an expectation that every student in every class is doing X number of entries during the year?
Correct. There is an expectation. We are calling them this year just an implementation expectation. It's not necessarily an expectation of the ultimate quality that we want. We still have issues to deal with, like how do we report and share back with parents at home, and what does that quality look like? We're not assessing students on this. This is purely a learning tool for them. But the expectation currently is that every K-4 teacher will have at least an entry in each subject. Specialists will have an entry in each of their specials as well, one per trimester. And then 5'8", the expectation is that there will be an entry per trimester, per subject level and department.
And my other question, you just started to touch on.
Yes.
Do parents see this at the end of the year? Are they given, how is this used with parents?
That is a great question. The idea is that the purpose behind this, besides being a metacognitive, reflective, sticky learning tool, it's also for students to begin leaving a digital footprint in a safe environment. So we're working through some of those issues. One of the suggestions that we've received from different feedback groups has been to share this with parents at the end of the year, not with an open link necessarily, but for it to become almost like a student-led conference with their parents, and perhaps at conference time. But we are still working through some of those details, because yes, in a perfect world, this would be something that students would share. Seesaw is different. Seesaw, the K-4 tool, is almost like a social media in a super-safe environment. Those posts get pushed out to parents immediately. The Sites is a little different.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah. So for me, in our education committee meeting, the thing that I asked, that Renee did a nice job of confirming, was, you know, you don't want to put this in the classrooms as, I don't want to call it a time waster, but fluff, or, you know, isn't this just cool? I think she explained, and the aha for me was, as we implement an inquiry-based curriculum, one of the key ways of reinforcing what we're trying to teach the children is through the documenting and reflecting, and that these tools provide a fairly user-friendly way to let the children do that. So when they find something that they've learned or find something they're excited about, they have a way of collecting it, they have a way of documenting it, so they can come back later, reflect on it, and reinforce their learning that they've already had.
Right.
So that, to me, is a great way of thinking about the value that these kinds of tools will add long-term.
Right. Absolutely. Because our point is to really help teachers, or students, learn about the value of the learning processes, rather than just being content-focused. And the K-1 iPad work goes nicely hand-in-hand with this as well, because what we found in K-1, the use of the authentic iPad technology, we've had great success in creating more with that tool, rather than using it as a consumption tool or as a game-playing tool. It's really become, let's take pictures of what we're doing. Let's start creating something with that picture. Let's reflect on it. Let's make a video. Let's do something that shows our teachers what we've learned, and then we can get timely and authentic feedback immediately. So that's part of our work, that we're, it crosses over.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Rebecca. We now move to board committee reports. Board of Ed, Jeff.
Thank you. The education committee met this past Friday, March 15th, here at the West Campus. We were joined by Susan Mills, Rebecca Jenkins, Jordan Salas, and Renee Fitzsimmons. The first thing we discussed was what Renee just talked about, digital portfolio updates. I won't go into that, since she did a great job of kind of giving an overview of what we discussed. The second thing we talked about was an update and recommendation on the iPad implementation at grade levels K and 1. As you know, last year, we started a one-to-one iPad relationship in those two grades. As we implement things like digital portfolios, you can see the way that the iPads in those two grades are being utilized to help with video and documentation of learning. As Renee pointed out, it's very difficult to take video and pictures on a Chromebook. So there is a recommendation that will be brought to the board, I believe in April, that's being put together to ask for an expansion of the one-to-one iPad usage into the second grade, so to follow the current first graders into second grade with iPads, and to start looking at the possibility of introducing iPads into fifth grade. There will be a test done after spring break with iPads in the second grade to get some learning, to see if it's truly beneficial for that grade over the Chromebooks, because obviously there are other issues that need to be addressed relative to typing and capturing of data and so forth. And then, over the summer, we're going to be talking with the fifth-grade teachers and getting their input, as well as doing some professional development on the iPads, to see if they believe that would add value for introducing that into the fifth grade, not next year, but I believe the following year. Anyway, that will be an official recommendation. It'll be coming to the board in April from Jordan and from Renee. The good news, as we went through this in the committee, was it appears to be fairly cost-neutral. So whether we use an iPad or whether we use Chromebooks, the costs of both devices are fairly cost-neutral. are fairly cost-neutral. So, it's not like iPads are going to create a huge hit to the budget. Susan talked about the need to bring out new AATH textbooks. We currently have 69 kids that, within DPM, that are taking AATH as their math. I'm sorry, next year, correct. We are currently having next year. So, she is going to be bringing a recommendation again next month for us to purchase 75 new AATH textbooks. Just as history, the current textbooks were purchased in 2006. So, after 13 years, they're pretty ratty and pretty beat up. At the same time, we have worked closely with District 115 and District 65 to come up with a recommended text that all three districts will utilize, so that we're aligned as kids move into the high school. Lastly, we got a quick update on advanced learning, and talked about the recommendations that are being made to move towards heterogeneous learning environments in classrooms in fifth grade in English Language Arts. A lot of this was based on recommendations from the Center for Talent Development, and the district has put together frequently-asking questions and details regarding this recommendation on the district's website. Jennifer, did you get a chance to?
I did.
Okay, so, it's a little tricky. You have to go in under curriculum, under the website, but once you get under there, and then you look under advanced learning, there is a plethora of information, as well as the actual recommendation itself, and the report that we got from the Center for Talent Development. So, I recommend the board members at least take a minute when you can to go in and read that. I didn't realize it was there either, so it was a good learning for me, and I'm glad we're getting that out to parents. We also talked about the possibility of creating advanced learning specialist roles, at least initially in grades five and six, that will help ensure that rigor and growth is continuing with our advanced learners, similar to what we do with our more special education learners. So, we thought that was an excellent idea as well. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 9th, here at the West Campus, and I will put out an early call for potential committee members on the Education Committee, because our committee members, community members are at the end of their two-year term. So, we'll be looking for new committee members in the summer. Thank you.
Questions for the Education Committee. Thanks, Jeff. Next up, Board Finance and Operations chaired by Tom Ford.
Finance and Ops meets tomorrow morning here at the West Campus at 7:00 a.m., and we'll be reviewing sort of the 2018, 2019 financial projections. So, 11 hours and 20 minutes. See you there.
Questions for Tom? Seeing none. Policy Committee chaired by Kent.
And Mike, there was no meeting of the Policy Committee, nothing to report. I'll keep it short.
Excellent. Kent will not be taking questions. Compensation Committee, Rob.
Did not meet.
Joint Shared Services has not met since our last meeting. Move on to Liaison Reports. NSSED, Suzanne.
So, NSSED met on March 13th, and I'm just going to share a few highlights from that meeting, so you all have the report. If you have questions about anything else, you're welcome to ask. NSSED, the Leadership Council, actually, yeah, approved the employment of two new administrators. Ms. Julie Dillon will be joining NSSED as the new Chief School Business Official. Ms. Dillon comes to us with many years of experience in accounting services and supervising staff in financial service areas. She served as adjunct faculty at Elgin Community College, been a manager or director of accounting at Southwest Bell, Ameritech, and Motorola, as well as an auditor with Arthur Andersen. Most recently, she served as the payroll supervisor at Woodstock School District 200, where she was highly valued. So, we're very excited about that, in terms of her ability to help us with the new financial model, which I'll speak about in a minute. Also, with the retirement of Doug Bolton, who is currently the principal of North Shore Academy, Laura Levine-Booty has been hired and will be the new principal of North Shore Academy slash Director of Social Emotional Learning. Because of the shifts in the way that NSSED is providing services and supporting districts, they are aware that supporting social emotional learning initiatives across buildings in places where kids are trying to stay, where districts are trying to keep their kids instead of sending them, that that's a part of that role now. Laura has been with NSSED since 2001, and has served in a variety of roles at North Shore Academy, this year as the Lead Learning Coordinator. Her instructional leadership has been highly valued in each of her roles, and she has increasingly been working with districts around supporting both academic and social emotional learning. So, both very exciting new hires. Just as a reminder, we're also in the process of reviewing cost-neutral structural departmental needs for the business office at NSSED. Part of that work is continuing with Dr. Zbilka from School Exec Connect, who helped us find the CSPO, to assist in a search for a Director of Financial Services, which will be a restructured role of the former Senior Accountant position, and it will serve as a strong support to the new Chief School Business Official position. Madeline Will is going to be visiting Chicago, May 20th and 21st in the area. She is a Special Education Pioneer and former Assistant Secretary of the Office of Special Education Programs for President Reagan. Ms. Madeline Will is visiting Chicago on May 21st as a part of our, of NSSED's Association of Parents and Staff Board Professional Learning Series for parents and our larger community. Ms. Will plans to do two Oprah-style sessions, morning and evening, led by parent mentor Susan Hans. The two will discuss special education history, present state, the state of federal legislation, and suggestions for Illinois educators, parents, and advocates on strategies to improve state outcomes. NSSED's Historical Financial Models, Enrollment Trends, and the Impact on the FY Preliminary Budget Planning Process was a report that got shared out to the board. The NSSED leadership has met with all of the superintendents and all of the CSPOs, and the Finance Committee of NSSED, I don't think they did this one with Special Ed Directors, but maybe they did, in presenting what has historically been the financial model over the years. There have been a number of them at NSSED, and talking about some of the challenges that that has created with declining enrollment in programs and declining tuitions, and how that can be addressed. Given the situation with the CSPO leaving, and a new one, and some other business office issues at NSSED, they were not able to develop the new financial model, so that is now something that they will be working on in 2019, 2020. And so, they have been seeking some guidance from the districts on how to manage the budget for next year. And so, there are going to be a few things. They're going to take a sort of a multi-pronged approach, which may be some increases to tuition, which have been pretty much held static for the last two years, possibly some changes to membership fees, and just sort of spreading out the revenue gathering across different modalities for the year. And they've gotten, what I understand to be, support and agreement for that, and then we will have a new financial model at some point next year. The next Leadership Council meeting is April 10th at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions regarding NSSED? Moving on, Legislative Liaison, Tom.
Okay. On February 20th, Governor Pritzker unveiled his 2020 budget for the great state of Illinois. Highlights, the taxman cometh. Governor Pritzker emphasized that he wants to go to a graduated state income tax. Illinois currently has a flat individual tax rate of 4.95% that is codified in the Illinois Constitution and can only be changed by law. The governor is proposing a graduated income tax, state income tax, which would need to be voted on and passed by three-fifths vote of the General Assembly to put it on the ballot. And once it's on the ballot, as a referendum, or not a referendum, as a voting item, it would occur, and the fastest that could occur is for 2020, I believe. This, along with adding more gambling and marijuana options for our residents, is expected to close our current $3 billion budget gap. No notable cuts are included, as the governor proclaimed that we cannot cut our way out of our fiscal problems. But he did talk about education. Spending on education will raise by $630 million in his budget, which will be divided among grade schools, high schools, universities, and early childhood programs. Unfortunately, this additional money will be offset by $800 million in expected payments to worker pension programs across the state. The state is also expected to sell $2.3 billion in pension bonds in April. That's my report for March.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions regarding legislative issues for Tom? Nicely done. Spirit of 67 Foundation, Suzanne.
The Spirit of 67 did not meet this month, and will be meeting on April 9th.
Thank you, Suzanne. Executive APT, Jeff.
The District 67 APT held its annual meeting on Wednesday, March 13th, at Croya. At that meeting, they voted and approved the incoming slate for the 2019 and 21 school years. They are Executive APT Board President Kristen Lee, Executive Board Communications Secretary will be Lacy Fidler, the Executive Board Treasurer will be Julie Bendehelm, the new Deerpath Middle School APT Building President will be Megan Engelberg, and the Everett Elementary APT President will be J.C. Rhodes. So, congratulations to all those folks, and we thank them in advance for their service. Also, need to send out a big thank you to Beth Laufenberg, who was the chairperson of the nominating committee this year. She did a wonderful job. It's a, it's an important process, and one that requires a level of finesse at times, so thanks to her. And I also want to thank all of the parents and principals from the various schools that participated on their school-level nominating boards. There's quite a list here, so I won't go into that, but thank you to all of them who served in that capacity. At that meeting, we also heard from Mr. Simic, who gave a state of the district address.
Rousing.
Rousing state of the district address, and a very interesting talk from Larry Potash from WGN Television, who talked about journalism and opportunities within journalism, how he likes to mentor and help kids get engaged within journalism. And Suzanne, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, so, I will just say that I was really kind of blown away by Mr. Potash's presentation. I didn't have a preconceived notion of what it was that he was going to be sharing with us. His top advice to anyone who wants to get into journalism was to be a reader, and to read, and to be well-informed, which, as a former teacher, I was like, woo-hoo! And then, his second thing that he said that he looks for when he's working with interns or mentoring people is critical thinking skills. And again, I was like, oh, yay! And so, I mean, I just, it was fantastic. He had a lot of great advice. He's very clearly, very open. And on a side note, I then connected him with some people at the high school, so that we could get him engaged with some of the career stuff that they do over there. And just today, had a wonderful email transaction, so awesome stuff.
The next meeting of the APT Executive Board will be on Wednesday, April 10th. That's it.
Questions regarding the APT? Thank you, Jeff. Thank Suzanne. Alice is going to give us a little liaison report on the Illinois Association of School Boards. Thank you, Alice.
Thank you. So, the Illinois Association of School Boards Lake Division met on Wednesday, March 13th, 2019, at Wakanda High School. Record was broken with over 200 board members, superintendents, and school board candidates in attendance. Presentation was given on Understanding and Leading for Equity, presented by the Consortium for Educational Change. They shared with us the Equity Big Eight to be considered. Those are disability, sexual orientation, religion, gender, race, culture, and socioeconomic status. They also shared with us the answers to the question, what is equity? Equity means many things. It means equality, it means access, it means proportional outcomes, it means political change, and it means social, psychological, and institutional change. So, equity basically means different things to different people. There's not one answer, but it's a combination. They brought up the question, how do you build equity? And you do so by developing leaders who care, and you cultivate the unique value of each child, and make it no longer predictable by student. So, take out the assumptions about the Big Eight, and remove the barriers that affect these Big Eight assumptions. In closing, we were reminded to not focus on the barriers, rather focus on the doorways, and for further information and workshops, they will make it available to anyone who requests it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Alice. Any questions regarding that presentation? Any other liaison reports that I may have missed? We now come to our second public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we move on to our action items. First, we have a approval of the auditor three-year contract.
I'd suggest that this be tabled until our next meeting can finish a process relative to this and bring this back to the board.
Great. Superintendent has recommended that we table this item. I have a motion to table the approval of the auditor three-year contract.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Kent. Thank you, Suzanne. Roll call vote, I guess, comment or discussion on the tabling.
This has no impact on any contracts or any current situation relative to pushing it back.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please. Eileen.
Mr. Novot.
Aye.
Dr. Lemke.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Sands.
Aye.
Mrs. Levert.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, may I have a motion to approve the miscellaneous construction bids in the amount of $1,258,756.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? I'll start off by asking, Jen, can you just, for the public transparency, explain what this is?
Sure, Ken. It's a combination of things that we've been talking about, mostly related to ADA, which covers ramps at a few of our buildings, in addition to door handles, doors, locks, making them all ADA accessible. Also included in this package is a, we call it, it's a kind of a built-in fridge freezer. If you kind of think industrial-sized freezer at Deerpath is also included in this project.
And, question is, just very generally, I don't have an objection to the projects themselves. It's just a question of the bids for this, or what is proposed. What is the time sensitivity for approval on this to accomplish it likely during summer?
You would need to approve it tonight to have it for this summer. Based on what the lead time currently is for some of these items, we're already pushing up towards July and August.
So, Jen, of the breakdown of the projects that we're looking to fund, you know, looking at what you've presented, the fridge freezer is basically online, in line with what we had originally estimated. We chose not to move forward with the chiller for the server room, thanks to some work being done by Jordan and others, so we don't necessarily need that, so that saves $50,000. So, the vast majority, or actually, all of the potential overruns versus what we originally estimated are being driven by the ADA work. Is there one area or subcontract package that seems to be far more than what we had expected it to be, that would drive such a large bump over what we originally had estimated?
I think what we're seeing in general is an increase in construction costs, not just in our school district, but in others. I keep hearing things, lead times and pricing in regards to steel in particular, is something that has impact. I know for us, even right now, looking at some of these, some of the doors themselves are on long lead time, so I can't speak for what other projects other people have in the works, but those seem to pop more than others. The fridge freezer itself is not really a unit, it's really rebuilding the inside of the unit, and you're right, that was pretty close to target, so that would be kind of your HVAC pieces versus anything else.
But when you look at the various bid packages, demolition, painting, HVAC, electrical, was there one that just jumped, like, you've got the general trades subcontract, which is, you know, $475,000. Is there one that just, you looked at and went, wow, we weren't quite expecting that? Or were the unassigned costs more than what we'd expected?
I think it's a combination. I think generally, across most of the packages, they're a little higher than what we anticipated, and then, based on the total cost of the project, we're recommending, I think, unexpected a little bit, some of the unassigned values and construction reimbursables, which we would hope to make an adjustment, or at least recoup some of that as we go through the project.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I do have another question or comment. I apologize, but Pepper has an estimated cost of $210,000 for construction reimbursables and just overall management fee, correct? Is that what that means?
So, general conditions cover such things, and that's, I have a breakdown on it, but yeah, it talks about your superintendent, your project assistant, your safety director quality, also includes things, though, like the field office supplies, the temporary toilets, the cleaning. So, there are some, there's some people component to it, but there's also things like the job signage, safety equipment, some of those things as well. So, there is some opportunity, I think, there in regard to maybe the manpower they're putting on the project. Other things will be a set cost. I mean, temporary toilets will be temporary toilets.
Sure. I just, in looking at it, of the total subcontract packages, came to a total of $777,000 or a little more. And then, on top of that, Pepper's charging us another two, potentially, charging us another 210, that's 27% of the actual cost of the project. Seems, it seems really high. Is that traditionally that high?
Depends on the scope of the project, and I do believe that, in my experience, this is a little high in the general conditions, which is why I've been working with Pepper on that, so I'm hoping to get a reduction. What I didn't want to do is delay the vote because of our timing issue. So, that's, yes, I do believe that it is a little high, and do I believe we have an opportunity? Yes. Will it be eliminated or cut in half? Probably not. Probably not.
If I hear, so just to clarify, you expect that while this is the approval that we need to do to be able to move forward, that the total cost of this project will likely be lower than what we're approving tonight?
You have two opportunities, I think. So one is that you have, you can see there's a 5% contingency built in there, and there's also unassigned allowances. Those, if, we work our projects pretty hard. If you look at the projects we've done over the last couple of years, we've been able to return most, if not all, of those funds to the district. We actually don't expend them, so it's not like we put them up front and we get a refund. We actually don't expend them. So unless we run into something crazy, which we have uncovered a few unusual things at Deer Path where, you know, beams weren't where they were supposed to be and things of that nature, I'm hoping, very hopeful that we can return some of those. The second part that I think that we have an opportunity on is the part that Mr. Fulkerson just mentioned, which is some of the Pepper reimbursable pieces, which is a separate piece. I think we have some opportunity there for some pushback on the manpower assigned specifically to the project.
Is there a way of doing that upfront rather than hoping it happens after the fact, after we sign the contract?
Well, what we need to do right now, and this is the biggest part of what the board is doing tonight, is actually letting those nine trade packages, right? So really, you're approving the bid on that piece so we can go ahead and secure that and make orders. The contingency and the unassigned allowances, there's no way to do that in advance, because it's really, has to do with what you're going to experience as you come through the project. I mean, we have uncovered a few unusual things, and we've tried to deal with them when we did the Haskins and when we did the Vestables. The general conditions piece, I will have an answer on a little bit quicker. I would anticipate I would know more on that in the next week or two, but that's going to take a little bit of back and forth as well. But the biggest thing for the project is getting this let to the vendor so that we can get in line for things like steel and doors.
So what happens if unassigned allowances comes in greater than what we've approved here tonight? It's more than $157,000?
There's no opportunity to do that without coming back to the board. I can't exceed the 1.2, that's the total cost of the project, without coming back to the board.
Okay, so with that in mind, you're always going to try and come in a little high and save money than to come in too low and have to continually come back and ask for money. Is that a fair assumption?
I think generally speaking, it's a little bit of under-promise and over-deliver, right? I mean, it's generally speaking, I mean, I've not, we've not had any projects even come close to hitting not only our contingency or the unassigned allowances. So do I think that they're generous and they're somewhat conservative? Yes.
Okay, so from a transparency perspective, if we're able to mimic what we've done in the past, we could see a actual reduction, an actual spending of about $250,000, or thereabout?
200-plus, yes.
Okay, so that would bring us down to closer to $1 million, which is much more in line with what we originally had anticipated.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please. Eileen?
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Nay.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up is the Olson Transportation Contract. May I have a motion to approve the Olson Transportation Contract as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to change the order of a few of our next action items, but we'll get to all of them. Next up, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the custodial contract bid in the amount of $517,560.29.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion regarding this? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Excuse me. Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to accept the resignation of non-tenured Administrator Sean Conway, dated March 15th, 2019, with the conditions established by the superintendent?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please. Eileen?
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Nay.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to accept the resignation of non-tenured Administrator Sean Conway, dated March 15th, 2019, with the conditions established by the superintendent?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion on this item?
Yeah, I apologize to the board. I stepped out at the beginning of this discussion workshop, so my apologies, but did we ever get to a understanding of the financial impact of bringing Teresa on board in terms of what are we going to be paying her based on the contract that's in front of us?
Yes, we did. And it's, it was something that we discussed in our workshop, and the contracted amount here for Dr. Durkin is $800 per day. And when we back out, so essentially she is replacing Mr. Conway, who is leaving, and the cost for him per day was about $460. And so there is a differential there on a daily basis. We are getting somebody that is exceptionally well-prepared to step in and deliver on day one, and not only work as a peer with Mr. Cartamone, but also to ably serve as a guide for a variety of different things in the building. And so I think there is going to be an incremental cost here for the time that she's going to be here, but it'll be well worth it.
And you had mentioned that she will be asked to do more than just technically replace Sean Conway. It's not, she's not going to be just a assistant principal. She's going to do more than that.
Absolutely. So some of the things that are, that the building has to deal with right now are the completion of teacher evaluations, and so having an experienced administrator in there really does make a difference. Also, we've gone from four administrators in the building down to three, and to have somebody that did not have that depth of experience, I think it would put an additional strain on the building principal, Mr. Cartamone. So having her be able to step in and address teacher evaluations as needed, student discipline as needed. Also, because she's a veteran administrator, she can work in whatever capacity that Mr. Cartamone would need her to. In addition, she's a valuable set of eyes in the building, and I think there is no question about how to make the, it's a transitional period, how to make the building work with fewer administrators in it than we had before. And I'm sure they're going to be discussing that quite a bit as well.
I did not see anything in the contract regarding, for lack of a better term, overtime. So she's gaining, basically, we're giving her $100 an hour. Is the expectation that she arrives at 8:00 and leaves at 5:00 and has an hour for lunch, and that's it? Or will she be amenable to doing what it takes in order to be able to meet the needs? Because I assume Mr. Conway was staying after hours to do things.
I can guarantee you that there hasn't been an eight-hour day in that building for a very long time.
Which is why, okay, fair enough.
The contract actually does stipulate an hourly rate of overtime, and so is she billing us for overtime?
I do.
Rebecca says no.
I am not aware of that.
It's not in the contract, so I assume the answer is no.
Yeah.
The overtime rate is in the contract.
Can we make a motion to guarantee up to $800 a day but not over? Can you do that?
If she's not billing it, I think, I think there's a general understanding, right, that she's working the job.
So to speak to you, Mrs. Levert, you can definitely make that stipulation if you'd like. Also, Dr. Duncan is a seasoned administrator, seasoned superintendent, and yes, the hourly rate is stipulated in there, and I think if we were asking her to work 16 hours a day, I think she would probably be billing us. But she is an invested educator who has come here to assist us in a time of transition and as a professional is billing us per day at the time being. But if you'd like to put that stipulation in as a protection, I think that that's absolutely fine.
I think it's important just to clarify. If we're paying for eight hours and she, for very legitimate reasons, needs to stay 10 because of evaluations or follow-ups and things like that, and then bills us an additional $200 for that day, we just need to understand what we're getting ourselves into, I think.
So Ellis or Jeff, if you'd like to make a counter motion, I would suggest you keep the words the same with up to $800 per day at the end. It's up to you if you want to make a counter motion.
It doesn't state overtime, anyway.
It doesn't state overtime. No, it does. On exhibit A, it says.
Any phone calls, phone consults for home or additional time, client will pay leadership coach interim administrator $100 per hour. So additional time, I'm assuming that to be overtime. So if she works beyond eight hours on a particular day, she's going to be billing us an extra $100, right?
And I can tell you what the intent of that was. I understand how it reads. The intent was, we don't have her in on a Friday, but she calls in to coach, or she's requested for two hours one day. So I understand how it reads.
Then that should be how it's worded. It should be worded to say that on a non-full student, on a non-day or a non-day of her expected attendance, if we need to reach out to her, it's $100 per hour.
And we can make that amendment.
That's, I think that would be much more clear relative to expectations.
Restating what was said in our meeting earlier, there's no benefits, it's just straight salary.
Yes.
So I'm looking at Jeff and Ellis, but the question is for anyone. Would anyone like to make a counter motion?
Well, I guess my perspective would be relative to approving the contract as it's currently written. If I'm being told that we'll work to clarify with Teresa that what we're saying now is what's expected out of the contract, and we get confirmation that that's doable, I don't know that we have to amend anything at the moment or counter motion anything. That being said, if we're voting on the exact wording as it is right now, then yes, I would make a counter motion, but I don't know exactly what the right verbiage would be, because...
I think what you say is that you'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract as, like amended as discussed. And that way, I mean, as long as Rebecca's very clear on the amendment that we're talking about, you can say amended as discussed. And that way, we're approving the contract with the exception of this one paragraph, and the paragraph will be rewritten and to stipulate what we've discussed here tonight.
So I will make a counter motion, and I will move that the board approve, what are we voting on again? The assistant, the leadership, right. Sorry, yes. I don't have that in front of me, I apologize. The leadership coach and interim administrator consultant contract for the remainder of the 2018-19 school year as amended to clarify how overtime will be handled regarding payment of a full student day.
Someone want to make that? So Jeff has made the motion. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Great. Comments or discussion on the counter motion?
Trying, just trying to avoid any surprises, that's all.
I would like to just add a comment in that I am pleased that in a situation where we need to fill a role, instead of simply filling that role when we had the opportunity to have someone with the depth of experience that she has, we are filling it and getting more than just filling the role out of the time that we have left in the year to make the best of it so that we hopefully start on a better foot, even in a stronger place next year, instead of just limping along till the end of the year. So kudos to you all for finding this opportunity for us.
Other comments or discussion on the counter motion? Roll call vote, please. Eileen on the counter motion.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move on to the approval of the human resources items as amended. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion on the HR report? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move the consent agenda. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements, February 2019.